Okay, Tally. Okay.
And then, statement of public notice?
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law.
Communications from the mayor's office. I don't believe I have anything this evening other than to remind everyone this is the last meeting before the holidays are upon us, so happy holidays to everyone. Last council meeting anyhow. Could be other city meetings. This is now public comment time, and so how that works is if anyone wishes to speak, there are forms out there to complete and bring up here. And you get three minutes. State your name and address, and then I will start the clock, and you have three minutes to speak. It must be an item on the agenda. And then, when public comment period is done, the public cannot comment during the discussion at all for the council when the agenda item is there. So if there's anybody who wishes to speak, bring up your form. Okay. That's a none.
I think maybe this one.
This is not the public hearing, though. This is the public comment for something else on the agenda. Public hearing, you don't have to fill out a paper. So the public hearing that pertains to...
She's confused.
I think she's confused, too.
What do you want to speak on, ma'am?
Is there a Tally in the school? Is there a Tally?
No.
That would be to bring your form up.
Yep.
I think he left the microphone on.
I still can't find it. Hendrickson Drive. I took a drive. One's Park and One's...
Sorry if we confused you. Now, you can just state your name and address, and you can go up to the microphone.
All right.
Oh, you don't wish to speak?
Thirty-six.
Yes, so you don't have to speak. That's fine.
Oh, no, 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 no. The one that they were talking about from last meeting.
Oh, that's fine. Thank you.
Henderson or something.
Okay, is there any? There's none. Nobody else has brought any up, so. Public comment is now done, and we're going to move into the public hearing.
Please take notice that the common council of the city of Muskego...
I don't think you're on, Joe. Oh. You can't hardly hear me.
Please take notice that the common council of the city of Muskego will hold a public hearing at 6:00 PM or shortly thereafter on Tuesday, December 11th, 2018, at Muskego City Hall to consider the petition of Doug and Julie Minin of DNJ and Sons LLC to rezone the following property known as tax key number 2259.981.002, which is vacant land on North Cape Road. The rezoning would be from B4 Highway Business District to M1 Light Industrial District for the purpose of allowing the construction of a new building for their concrete foundation business on the property. The 2020 comprehensive plan also needs to be amended from business use to industrial use. The petitioner's application is available for public inspection at the city of Muskego Planning Division Office. All interested parties will be given an opportunity to be heard.
Thank you. Adam?
Thanks, Mayor. As was stated, yeah, this is a rezoning request in the southeastern part of the city off of North Cape Road. This area that's right now zoned for B4, the applicant is looking to rezone the property to M1 and change the comprehensive plan from commercial to industrial. Their use kind of teeters on being commercial, being industrial. It's for DJ and DNJ and Sons LLC. They basically do basement forms, like for port basements. So their business does involve some trucking because they have to truck their forms in and out. So to be safe, we thought it was safer per talking with the applicant to ask for the M1 zoning, as trucking is definitely allowable in that district rather than have it be in the B4 and be a little questionable. We wanted to make sure that they were... They wanted to make sure they're protected. We wanted to make sure we were confident that their use is allowed in this area. This same applicant came through earlier this year to do a land division to split this lot that they're now rezoning from a larger lot that someone else owned. In the meantime, they've taken ownership of the lot, are going through the rezoning, and sounds like in short order will be coming forward for their building site and operation plan and site layout approval at a future plan commission date. At the plan commission, discussions, plan commission conditionally did recommend approval of this, subject to any comments tonight. And there was one comment we received in writing that just wanted to make sure that whenever a building does get proposed down the road with the BSO, that it follows the Durham Hill Design Guide, which is in that area. So we just reassured that person that the design guide would be followed, as plan commission will have to look at that.
Thank you, Adam. So if there's anyone here that wishes to speak regarding this public hearing, please step up to the microphone. Okay, there is no one, so that I will close the public hearing. Consent agenda.
Approval of common council minutes for November 27th. Approval of operator licenses. Resolution 100, approval of a certified survey map for Dillit. Resolution 101, approval of a certified survey map for Heinrich. Resolution 102, approval of a certified survey map for Jiffy Lube. Resolution 103, approval of a developer's agreement between Maquis Properties BV, comma, LC, and the city of Muskego for Harvest Court. And resolution 104, approval of an agreement with HydroCorp for a cross-connection control program.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approving growth.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, please cast your vote. Consent agenda items approved unanimously. No new business, unfinished business, ordinance 1425, and ordinance to amend the zoning map code, and 2020 comprehensive plan of the city of Muskego from I1 to PD, former Muskego Elementary School. This is the second reading. I need a motion.
Wait just a second. I got to figure this out.
What?
I have to figure out how to get to that.
I'm sorry, you have to... You have to do it electronically. I'm forgetting.
Yeah.
So we have to let all the electronics catch up. Do we have a motion?
Okay, we have a motion. We need a second.
We need a second. And a second, thank you.
Please motion.
Okay, so now, if you want to... Adam, did you want to come up?
Yeah, what I could do is kind of just summarize. Typically, what we do is summarize any kind of comments that came from either plan commission and/or the public hearing, kind of answer some of the questions that we had before. I'll start with plan commission, as that's a fairly easy one. This went to plan commission. They gave a positive recommendation. They didn't really have a lot of comments on it. One person did speak at the meeting talking about, you know, desire for some park space, kind of for some goals of the park plan that they... Excuse me, the comprehensive plan they believe were there. But relating to the comments from the public hearing, I'll summarize some of the main items that were kind of talked about and kind of just give a quick answer. So one talk, one point was about the single-family neighborhood, and a comment on that was within a block of this area. There are single-family homes, high-density condos, and commercials. There is mixed use with you go a few blocks any direction, you're going to find varying uses. Relating to, there was a comment, this should stay a playground or park. Since the school district owns the property, they choose who they want to sell it to and for a what price. There are no specific plans for a new park in the adopted 2017-2021 Parking Conservation Plan. According to that plan and the research that was done, the radius that neighborhood parks should serve, do serve this area by a couple different parks. So that's what that plan at least recommends. Relating to someone not wanting big buildings or tall buildings, these buildings will be... The existing school stays its existing size, and in the renderings or photos that we saw of the proposed townhomes, they would be a two-story building with a peaked roof. So no different in height than any other two-story home in the area, per se. So they are proposing two stories with a peaked roof. Nothing like a three- or four-story building is shown in their conceptual photos. So they would follow the normal 30-foot height requirement. As far as tax impact goes, school property currently is not taxed on the tax roll. Any new users will be on the tax roll, so that could, in theory, mean more tax dollars coming to the community. There are some questions about runoff from the school currently. As part of any new development or redevelopment, stormwater has to be looked at. The developer on their plans already shows accounting for some stormwater management. Stormwater after any development happens here, whether it's this use or another, should only be better than it existed today, as the standards today are much better than what exists there now, because there's nothing there now from a stormwater management standpoint. So things will have to be designed with proper swales, retention ponds, things like that. So drainage should only improve after a project, you know, is designed and reviewed by our engineering staff. As far as who pays for any kind of improvements, if there would be any improvements needed, they're typically paid by the developer. Relating to, do we need more senior housing? The city does not regulate how much senior housing we have. We can't. The developer chooses if they want to age restrict the development. The city cannot require age restrictions at all. Relating to the land being... If the land was donated to the school, can they sell it? And the school district does own the property, so it really is their will what they want to do with it. As far as traffic patterns were concerned, there's basically going to be two access points on the Michi, one in the north part of this development, and one proposed in the south part. So two access sites are what are proposed. As far as will they have to pay to use the lake, or will they get free lake access? Per the mapping, they appear to be in the... Treated as an off-lake property when it comes to paying an off-lake or on-lake due. They're within the boundary that shows as an off-lake property, so they should be paying off-lake dues just as any other off-lake property would in that vicinity. And then, they'll have the same rights to use any public access in the area. There's two public access sites very close to this development on Little Muskego. They'll have the rights to use those just as any member of the public does. There was a note about not having a path through the property currently, and the city typically can't require a public path through a property that's private. Someone talked about there being too many buildings and not enough people. Developer believes that there is a market for this proposal. There were some questions about it's good that they're preserving the school, but there's too much senior housing. And once again, you know, the school building is being preserved, but the city can't restrict how much senior housing we have. Relating to the downtown, you know, this area kind of being general, and the general downtown area needing a sense of place, and some other goals from the comp plan, you know, the comp plan does suggest this as a goal, as well as it suggests, you know, varying shapes of housing and different things like that and differing densities. So you look at the housing section, there's a lot of things that that housing suggests that housing section suggests that this plan is in compliance with. There's some talk about city taking lake rights away. We weren't really sure what that was response to, as there are public access sites in the area. And then, I think there was a comment here about one bedrooms being too congested and too many people in this one-block area. But, you know, the proposal, that density that they're asking for is well within the zoning allowance. They could actually go more dense than they're asking. Like I said, they're asking for a total of 40 units. I think the zoning was up to 48. Because they're a planned development, they could even ask for a 10% bonus upon that, and they aren't going to the max or asking for the bonus. So those were kind of the summary of the comments from the public hearing.
Thanks, Adam. So if anyone wishes to speak, have questions or anything?
I don't know. Did I do...
We've got Alderman Borman.
I can't do it without mine.
I want to address the lawyer. There was about six or seven different organizations that were going to help pay for the renovation of the school in the presentation that we were given by Commonwealth, is that right, last week? Some had very historic names, some had no names or no indications of what... So what are we getting ourselves into by having them accept that money?
I have no idea.
I think they just have to follow historical guidelines by taking as...
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Yeah. Because there was at least six different groups you gave last week that were, I think at the planning commission, maybe.
Sure. So we're working with the state Historic Preservation Office and the National Park Service in order to get the historic tax credits. And then, WEDC oversees the state historic tax credits, but they work in partnership with the state Historic Preservation Office. So basically, what those groups do is all of their responsibility is to make sure that we're keeping the school consistent with the historic nature. So, you know, if there are historic windows in a school, we have to keep them. If they're historically, the floors were wood floors, you have to keep them. There's some gray areas and certain things, but basically, they keep really close watch over making sure we're not doing things that would alter the history of the school within a reasonable request.
We've stumbled before when we've taken money from the government and ended up doing things that we didn't think we were going to have to do in the first place. I just want to make sure that we aren't doing that again.
I think the attorney has to respond. We aren't taking any money. The city isn't. We have to... But we have to clarify that, because that's your...
Okay.
Jeff, do you want to... Go ahead.
Who would be taking... You would be taking... You're applying for the money.
Correct. Just a developer.
So the city isn't...
But then, it's in our city. Are we putting something in our city that we don't know what strings are attached to it?
What strings are attached to... I'm just totally lost at what you're asking me.
Well, like for instance, I just want to make sure that we aren't getting anything that we don't know about here. When we took federal funds on Janesville Road, we got into some things that we didn't want to do, that we're still doing, like plowing sidewalks and things like that. Are we going to get into anything like that, accepting these federal monies for the building?
Well, I got to correct that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I have to correct, because that's not true. We didn't take anything. It was a county highway, Janesville Road. I have to clarify, because there are people here, and I don't want any misrepresentation. The county had taken some federal grants that had nothing to do with sidewalks. The council approved putting sidewalks in. The council approved us not having an ordinance passing the maintenance of snow plowing onto a budding property owner. So I just want to clarify, has nothing to do with any grants. Okay, Jeff, go ahead.
Okay, go back to that meeting that we had then when it was explained to us differently. But we aren't getting into anything like that. And are these going to be low-income housing now?
You'd have to ask this gentleman.
Yeah, so we are applying for... It's called housing tax credits through Wisconsin Housing and Economic Development Authority.
How come that's the first time we heard of that?
It was mentioned throughout. It was discussed at plan commission. We did discuss with city staff that we were likely going to be applying for the housing tax credits.
So once you accept government money...
Have we decided as a consulate we're going to do that?
That you're going to do what?
I have... Bring low-income housing into the community?
Well, you've got to be really careful with that.
I know.
Well...
Both ways.
You got to be careful with the issue of discrimination, and you can't just say... You can't look at a developer and say that you're not able to rent to somebody because they're going to bring in low-income housing. That would be discrimination.
But we haven't discussed that as a consul.
Well, public assistance is what we call a lawful source of income. And a lawful source of income is a protected status. So you can discuss it, and we as a city, we have to do everything we can to help eliminate discrimination in our city. So you can discuss it amongst yourselves, but what I'm saying is, it wouldn't be proper to look at a developer and say, "We're going to require that you don't have low-income housing as part of your development." Then we'd be assisting the developer in committing discrimination, and that I can't advise you as an attorney to do.
But as an alderman, I feel that my constituents have got to know that that is now a reality in our community. And I don't believe they've been told that, because we were never informed of that.
Well, I mean, I was here last week at plan commission, and I think you brought it up, sir. Is that correct?
Apparently...
At plan commission, but did you bring that up on... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not on here. Go ahead.
Apparently, I didn't hear that or understand that.
Okay. Well, I mean, I know you were here, but maybe you want to explain it again? I think you just did explain it.
Yeah. So basically, what the project is, is it'll require the historic... Or the, excuse me, the housing tax credit piece. What that requires is, it's going to require 85% of the units will be set aside for 60% or less than the county median income, which in Waukesha County is actually quite high, so...
Wait a minute. Say that again. 85% of 60%? What did you just say?
So it's 85% of the units. So 34 out of the 40 units will be set aside for 60% or less than the county median income. So that goes for senior and the family units. So it would be spread throughout.
So you got to say they get 85% of the units...
We have to go one at a time. We have people waiting in the queue.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to understand what he's saying. I don't understand what he's saying.
So I think Waukesha's county median income is somewhere around $85,000. I don't know if any of you know the exact number, but so it would be 60% of the median income for Waukesha County. So typically, it's school teachers, clinicians, like medical assistants. I know in quite a few communities we work in, the city has looked at their whole payroll, and more than half of the city staff would qualify. So it's really workforce housing and then for the seniors, an even higher percentage qualify, because seniors are obviously on a fixed income a lot of times, so.
So you're still planning on putting seniors in the old-school building?
Correct. It's 22 units. Nothing's changed since last time I was here. We got the market study back. The capture rates were very high. 2% was the capture rate, which is... Means demand is very, very high. There's not any comparable properties. So it's 22 units in the school for seniors, which is 55 and older, and 18 family units in the new construction townhouses that were shown on the conceptual plan.
Last time, too, we talked about having a lot of interest in having a playground area?
Yeah, that was something I did address at the plan commission. We're proposing a playground on the project. It's something we work with the city to dedicate it as a public playground. Liability reasons, we can't have our playground be a public playground, but it's something we'd be willing to work with the city and city staff on as we come forward with full plans.
You don't have an idea where it's at? You don't... Do you do the plans?
Are we ready to move to the next speaker or not?
Go ahead.
Can I just... One more thing. One more thing I forgot to say about your question about bringing this into our community or not. We did... We do have an ordinance where we adopt... 106.50 is the Wisconsin state statutes on fair housing. We have an ordinance, which was passed by everyone here, where we adopt that particular statute. So we are... Our ordinance says we will comply with the Wisconsin statutes on fair housing.
Yes.
I forgot to bring that up.
Alderman Kapusta.
Question... Couple of questions for you. For the residents of the city of Muskego, and obviously residents in the immediate vicinity, how do you feel that this enhances the city? What do you bring to the city that makes us important or a good project?
I think it's very important for the school district. Obviously, allows them to not have to tear the school down. They get a significant amount of income coming into the school district for that, which could obviously go to educational services. I think anytime we can preserve a historic building within a community, that's important. I think it's consistent with the surrounding neighborhood, provides a much-needed workforce, affordable, and senior housing. So I think that's all very valuable. I think, as mentioned, we tried to be very sensitive to design an apartment project that was consistent with the surrounding density of the neighborhood. I think we were able to do that, so... And I think the previous proposal that came forward, I think, had almost more than double the number of units that we were proposing, so I think it would fit in great, be a great asset for the community, and put the property back on the tax rolls. Right now, it's sitting there vacant, kind of a drain on the community's resources.
With all due respect, they've really had zero support for the project, zero, from people in the vicinity. Adam, are you saying, too, that the school district's fully endorsing this?
No, they...
They're just selling the property?
I know they're just selling it, so we don't know the endorsement level of it.
They have a box.
Okay.
Yeah, so the school district did select us, too, through RFP process, awarded us. So, yep. They're on board with the program. I don't know if I can go out and say an endorsement. I guess they are endorsing the project, because they selected us, but...
They're selling the property.
Mm-hmm. And in order to pursue this project for the playground, we'd have to work through the council with our proposal to merge us to be a public property piece? How would that work for the playground?
I could speak to that from my... So once we come through with... Would come through with the final site plan, operation plan, and full survey, engineering, as we're working through that process, we could work with Adam and city staff to parcel off a piece of the property to dedicate to the city and work out some type of maintenance agreement between us and see if we can find a good fit that makes sense for the community to have a nice park for the neighborhood.
And ultimately, the council, approved by the council.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Alderman Kubaki.
Just a couple of comments. The median income for Waukesha County is 62,839. 60% of that would be 37,703, so that's... Those are what the real numbers are. The only other comment I have is that, you know, discussions about parks and, you know, the buildings themselves are part of the BSO process. Mission here today is just to look at the rezoning. That's all I have to say.
Alderman Wolf.
Well, I drove through the area. I did have some concerns about, as you get closer to the lake, to the roads over there. Matter of fact, I tried going down one, and a school bus was coming at me, so I turned the other way, and then a truck was coming at me. And there wasn't a lot of room. I know it's a little further back, but it's still a concern with the roads back there. I don't know how we're going to work that out with the planning commissioner, because their project is actually affecting that area. I don't know how they're responsible for any of that or not. I don't know. Those are questions I have. But it was... The roads are pretty tight back there. And the other question I have is, when we were talking about historical dollar or government dollars coming in for the historical side, we're treating this as one project? Or are we treating this as two projects? Is the historical government money coming in just for the school, or is it for the whole project, including the... Are these multifamily units you're putting up? I mean, that's what you're putting in there, right? So it's more of a commercial-type property? So is the money also governing that as well?
Because it's... Was historically all part of the school site, the historic folks will review the new construction to make sure it's not impacting the project. But in terms of the dollars that we spend where we get historic tax credits for spending them, those are just towards the dollars that are spent on rehabbing the school. So the new construction units don't receive the historic tax credits.
Okay, so I'm just trying to figure out what the government is governing and not governing. So they're going to govern the units only in the historical part?
Correct.
The new ones... What I'm concerned with is the rent values, especially with the new construction we just did at Parkland Mall and across the street, what is it? What is the name of your places over there?
Bay Breeze.
Bay Breeze, you know, which is all private roads, and I'm assuming that's what you're going to have, private roads as well?
Yep, it's just one private road.
So I'm just... I'm concerned about if we're taking government money, what's that going to do to the property values and the rent values in the area if that government money is also governing the multifamilies that are going in? Are they?
Yeah. So I mean, in terms of the rent values going up, the studies on the historic tax credits is the tax values go up significantly in the surrounding area. And then, in terms of the housing tax credits, the University of Wisconsin Real Estate Program has actually done a lot of work on that, and they've shown that the values go up as well, so.
But my concern is, is that if we're taking the money from the government and we're reducing rents for people to live there, does that have an effect on the value of the property or the rents in the area? That's my concern. They give me studies and everything, but I'm just looking at...
No, I think it actually goes up, because what it does is provides more affordable housing and a higher quality. So what the tax credits do is allow us to build a nicer project, but keep the rents affordable. So that gets folks that might be in substandard housing and kind of creates a spin-off effect. You know, someone might be living in a substandard, single-family home that, you know, maybe one person owns a few units throughout the city, and it's not professionally managed,[1797.71] and helps to boost those properties as well. So that's part of the reason why the surrounding properties typically go up.
Okay, and the other part of the question I started with was the roads there. I'm assuming you have no dollar values going into, for road improvements in that area?
That's all at our cost for the roads, the private drives.
But I'm talking about the surrounding areas because if, I don't know if you've driven through there, but I did, and I never drive through there, but I just looked at it for the community. It's going to increase traffic. People are going to come in and off of the Parkland Development Area and cut through that area to get to their places and things like that. And I don't know what we're going to do as a city, what we can do as a city to help traffic control, but you're causing it, is how I'm looking at it, by putting your development in. So that's a concern for me. I don't know, I'm just bringing it up.
I'll let Adam respond to that. I mean, I think the intensity of the use should be significantly less, but...
I mean, I'm assuming you did studies on that?
I'm thinking you're talking about, I mean, Michi Drive is a normal-ish road. I'm not saying it might not be a foot, I don't know the exact width of it, but it's a two-way road.
It's like an alley, they're like alleyway.
But as you start going that alleyway, I mean, that's, if that's my opinion, that's a whole different conversation. This council should have separate from what goes on here. It's a one-way, it's a two-way traveled road that's one lane wide. Why do we have that? Good question. Whether something happens here or not, I feel like that is its own separate issue that I'm surprised has never been changed. I mean, maybe this forces a conversation to say, does a lane, a road that's one lane wide already? Because there's no way to widen it. Without tearing down houses, no way to widen it.
No, I looked at that.
Do you maybe market it as a one-way or something?
Yes.
I feel like that's beside the topic here because who's going to intentionally go down a road that they know that they might not build a pass? I wouldn't. If I know that I'm going to have trouble passing because maybe a car's going the way, I'm going to avoid that road. That's me.
It's kind of a spinoff of what's happening. I mean, we've got to be aware of this because it's causing it. We don't have that cause right now, except maybe in the morning and in the evening with the school traffic, right?
Well, you said, if you went down it and you went one way and a bus was there and you went the other way and another car's coming, it's happened to me as an employee here many, many times.
Right.
So I think that's an issue regardless of what happens here. Could you require that...
But the percentage is going to change.
Sure. I mean, could you require here that as they exit their driveways, they have to turn right? In theory, you could require that. We've had people, the county restricts access, like right turns and left-hand movements all the time. You could say, if you're leaving this development, you have to go right, which takes you out to Janesville. You could require that as part of a BSO. Does that stop people coming from land in that way? No, I mean, everyone in that neighborhood has the right to use that, even though it's narrow, unless you start signing it a one-way or something like that. But I mean, you could restrict turning movements out of the development. I mean, you want to be cautious on that, but could you say if you're turning out of this new complex, you can't turn left, which would take you to the narrow street, turn right, which takes you down Michi to Janesville? That could be, that could be like a site thing at the BSO time, and that alleviates traffic going that way. But I mean, people in the neighborhood already use that narrow street.
We definitely would want their input. I'm just, I'm just bringing up what I saw. I try to, you know, look at both sides when I drive the area to see what's going on. And that was a major concern for me, is that it's not friendly, and we got to make it friendly somehow. So, and I'm assuming it's your district, right, Tom?
Yep. And that street is a product of the old lake community with cottages and a one-lane road was more than enough to service cottages, that there was probably no buildings originally between those lake cottages and Janesville Road or Janesville Plank Road at that time. It was probably like a little gravel driveway that led back there, and people just started building around it. I mean, that's just a product of, you know, don't get me wrong, there's other, not that narrow, that's probably the narrowest street in the city.
Well, that's a bad spot, yeah.
But there's a few other, definitely very substandard streets along the lake because they were a product of just the old cottage setups, and as people developed around them and outlines were established, it just left us what we have left today.
And when I did drive down there, you know, I'm going to dwell on this a little bit, is that, you know, it says not a through street or whatever we put for signs on wherever we are. So I went down it anyway, and it looks like you can turn to get out, but you can't. So I used someone's driveway and turned around and came back, and I went the other way. And it looks like it goes into an alley, and I wasn't sure. I didn't drive down there. I went around, I went around several times, and when you have, when you're going to put more buildings and more people in there and you're going to have visitors and stuff, it's going to be hard for people to get around. And I would think as a homeowner myself in that area, I wouldn't want that traffic coming and spinning around and getting into my, you know, I look at it as not a friendly idea. You know, I, you want to keep those areas clean and safe and people out there that don't need to be back there, good or bad, you know, whatever that comment meant. But we got to work with the roads. That's the whole problem I see with that whole development down there.
And yeah, I think you could make that case whether it stays vacant, whether it stays a school, whether it stays in the proposal, no matter what happened, even right now. It's a bad situation that should probably be addressed.
But the percentages are going to change, but the percentages are going to change, so we got to address it.
Correct.
Okay, Alderman Madden.
Okay, I just wanted to kind of, we're here to talk about the zoning, and all the things that are coming up are extremely important, but they need to happen at Plan Commission? When we actually see what they're looking for? Because right now, we're all guessing. We're speculating. Today, the property isn't worth anything to us because unless somebody wants to come in and open up another school, nothing can go there. So tonight, we're here looking at zoning changes and all the rest we need to talk about in the future.
Alderman Engelhardt? Oh, wait, did, I'm sorry, why did you have your hand up?
No, I think, I thought Alderman Wolf jumped in. Yeah, I appreciate what Alderman Madden just tried to keep us on target on here, but my thought beforehand was strings attached with what you get only to that building for the preservation of that building, does it have any effect on the apartments you're proposing at all? That's what I just asked, as far as this affordable housing question.
Are there strings attached in terms of design or what?
What you're allowed to do, or you have no money involved otherwise for the apartment part of this? Or the 18 apartments, are they independent of your other grants and stuff that you're applying for?
So the whole, yeah, so it's treated as one project?
It gets treated as one project, so that money pertains to everything then?
So, yeah, yes.
So your percentage is applied across the board on everything you're proposing then?
Correct. Yep, so it's 34 out of the 40, out of the 40 units.
Are, are under that? Any strings attached in that way? Okay.
Yeah, and that's, that's the strings attached, are keeping the units affordable. And in terms of the street, if we're open to different designs and, you know, we don't have to connect on the Michi, we can connect in different ways. We're definitely open that what's been submitted was conceptual, so, you know, if traffic's directed another way, that's something we can work with the city on too.
Alderman Wolf.
No, I appreciate it, Eileen, that you brought this up to try to keep us on track, but in order for me to make an intelligent vote, I need to voice my opinion on what I saw and what I was involved with when I was in that area. And I need the developer to know that before I make my vote. That's why I brought this up and dwelled on it a little bit. And I know the planning commission will do the right thing and do what they need to do, but, you know, as a city, we have to look at the whole thing in the surrounding area too. So I just want to make sure that everybody knew my opinion on the road before I make a vote. That's why I dwelled on it, so.
Okay, Alderman Kapusta.
You know, I think, I appreciate hearing all the comments, but I think if you look at that area, it's not a good fit. And I understand the rezoning piece, but if you rezone it, that opens step one, and that's not where we should be. I don't know if this is in the best interest of that vicinity. And that's the bigger question. And to do this, I understand we don't get any money. We didn't get any money for how many years? Okay, we're used to not getting any money. We get good at it sometimes. But what's in the best interest of people who've lived there and invested their time and life there? I think that's key to what we're trying to do here. So I suggest that.
There's none of that, please. And now, is there anybody else? Okay, our attorney here is...
Yeah, Mayor, could you just kind of, I'm concerned about a couple of things. Could you go through, because I don't know the history, what happened with this property a while back when it was trying to be rezoned with a different developer?
Okay, Adam actually did explain that at the very beginning, and I'm not sure if anybody heard that.
Now, this is after the school pulled out, right?
Yes, and maybe Adam can tell you that, but the bottom line is, and then he'll tell you what happened.
Yes.
The council here already approved a development similar, but actually more density.
Yeah, so the things that you can base your decision on are the same. It's multifamily housing. That's what you have to, that's what you're looking at. And what they were looking at was the previous approval, which was approved by council, was existing school was a type assisted living. They were building another larger assisted living facility next to it, like where the existing parking lot is. The entire back was going to then be more dense, taller, multifamily. It was going to be age restricted to a senior, was what the developer was stating, but multifamily's multi-family in the code. The code does not and cannot look at an age versus a young age, an old age, anything. They asked for a multifamily, they got it at a much higher density than was proposed here.
And so, just to piggyback off of that, my concern, and if I didn't say this, I don't think I'd be representing you correctly, my concern is that you've, as Adam said and the mayor said, you've already approved this for a different development, which was more dense. That development didn't go through. So now you've got a new developer coming to you, and he's proposing something, again, that is less restrictive than what you already approved. My fear is that there's the possibility here, and I can never, you know, if I had a dime for everybody who said they were going to sue me, I'd be rich, but you're opening up a possibility for litigation for a new developer or this developer to come in and say, well, wait a minute, you approved it, I'm providing, I'm proposing something less, and it begs the question, why? Why are you not approving this for me? So I think it's important enough that, and you can tell me if I'm crazy here, I know we got these new fandangled system, but I'm concerned enough that maybe we go off of this voting board and we have each alderman state their reason as to why they're voting yes or no, so that we make a good record. Because I'm concerned about a record in the event that a lawsuit comes about.
We haven't done that in the past.
And then you can, you don't have to follow what I say, you don't have to...
I'm just pointing that out.
Right. I don't like changing the rules in the middle of a game.
That is actually not true. We did do that before. We did that for a development on Janesville Road, and it was just a couple, four years ago. I actually know exactly when it was, it was four years ago.
We did?
So it was the Enter-Con proposal for the property on Janesville at Pioneer for Conus. And so that, yes, we did go through that process. Our city attorney at that time came to council because it had been advanced to, from Plan Commission without any, it wasn't, it was just denied. At Plan Commission, came to council, and attorney convinced the council to send it back to Plan Commission and go through the code so that you're very clear on the reasons for approval. Am I correct in saying that?
We just want to make sure that there, we have a code, and it lists all of the things that you should consider in approving or denying. And I'm just pointing out that I want to make sure that you're following our code. Now, that being said, you guys can do what you want on that. The other thing I need to bring up is whenever you do an amendment to a zoning, citizens are allowed to protest a zoning. If you remember, we did one for Parkland Town. There's a statute that they follow, and when somebody files a protest petition, what I need to do is I go through the statute to see whether or not they meet the requirements of the statute. Once I find that requirements are met, I kind of stop because there's no reason to look at the other things. So in this one, what we're, we did receive protest petitions. We received a total of five of them. And in this particular case, so we have six of them. Well, this isn't going to really affect what I say, so, all right, thank you. All right, so in this particular case, what I looked at is owners of 20% or more of the area of land immediately adjacent to the proposal, extending 100 feet therefrom. I had a map drawn. If you just look at that area, that's about 10 households. So you'd only need two to be 20%. We have three that have fallen within there. So in my opinion, we do have a valid protest petition. Why is this important? It's important because it changes the vote for all of you from a majority to three-fourths. And so we have six here, so three-fourths would be, five of you would have to vote yes to pass the amendment. So I just wanted to lay that out.
Thank you. Alderman Wolf.
I just had a, just a quick question. We're talking about the past project versus the new one proposed since the proposal is selling the property in the school district. Was there historical money involved with that?
No.
Mayor, I don't know the answer to that.
I don't believe so, but I could be wrong. I just want to point it out, not that I...
There wasn't that was disclosed to us, but that is not something that we have to know or can have to ask or can ask. If they didn't want to tell us, they wouldn't have to, because that's not for us to decide.
It's, and I don't think it's a basis for us to deny either.
No, it's not. I just want to point out that if there was a difference in the projects, that we're all aware of it. That's the only reason I brought it up.
Okay. Alderman Engelhardt?
Before we get to the point of voting on this, it occurs to me that we were told in the process with the planning commission that the reason, or part of the reason in the proposal on the rezoning was because you had proposed a certain number of units in the school building. Adam can speak to this, I think.
So they're asking for a planned development district. Planned development districts has to still pick a base zoning. So they're picking our RM1 zoning, which is our normal, more dense, multifamily district that's in many areas of the city, and that allows up to 16 units in one building. The only reason they're asking for a planned development tonight, for this request, is because they want 22 units in the existing school building. So those 22 senior apartments, because that's over 16 in one building, that's the only reason that they're asking for the planned development zoning. If their proposal was only 16 units in that building, they wouldn't even be asking for planned development, it would just be a straight multifamily zoning. So not much different than what you're really asking for. But yeah, that's the only reason that the planned development kicks in. If they were to say, we're just going to put 16 units in here, the planned development would be moot point, and then they're just asking for a straight rezoning to RM1 instead of a planned development based upon the RM1.
So is that part of the question we're voting on tonight?
Well, you're, if you, when you're voting, their proposal's 22 units in that building, that's what the planned development, yeah, that's what they requested as part of, they requested a planned development zoning, which the city has 50-some of them. This is just another one of those. And the only reason they ask for that part of the rezoning, it's just a little different process from our administration side, is because they want more than 16 units in a building.
Could this be all...
The code dictates, depending which multifamily district, we have three multifamily districts. One of them allows only two units per building, one allows eight per building, and one allows 16 units per building. Anything more than that, which we do have in the city, has to go through the planned development process.
Okay. So no, here, or failure in passage tonight here, would that give them opportunity to go back to the planning commission again with a different proposal or...
No, I mean, if it gets approved here, it moves forward to Plan Commission for design, and if it would get denied here, I mean, anyone can request something different. Yeah, it wouldn't go back to Plan Commission. This is the final place, whether it gets approved or denied, this is where it lies in the end. Plan Commission gave a recommendation that was for approval.
Alderman Madden.
I'm concerned that there seems to be a lot of uncomfortable decisions being made here. I don't want to see us get into a lawsuit. I saw a huge lawsuit in New Berlin over this exact thing, and that kind of scares me. It's a lot of tax dollars. So if we don't feel like we have the votes, I would like to defer it until we get the answers that we need, so that we don't wind up in that position.
Alderman Kubaki.
I understand your concern. My concern goes along those lines, is that we had a proposal that was for, the density was a greater amount of density, almost doubled the density that we're looking at here. And now we're looking at a very similar proposal at half the density, and we're considering rejecting it for what reason? A park was never talked about in the previous discussion. Traffic patterns we can work out through a BSO. I'm just really uncomfortable with a project that appears much more superior than the project we had already approved.
Alderman Wolf.
Alderman Wolf?
I, I'm kinda on, uh, same lines with Eileen. The, the question I have is, is it worth deferring the vote till we have every alderman in here? Cause of the, my, my concern is the, um, racial after the petition. And, and, and I don't know if, if that's, uh, something I should worry about or not, but I think we should look at that. Should we have a full council? Because we have changed the rules on, on the vote? That's-
Whether you have five, uh, six aldermen here, seven, only one can vote no in, in order for it to pass. It, it's-
Oh, either way?
Either way.
It's, it's just three-fourths, so, and you, you round up, so, if you have seven, it's six. If now we have six, it's five.
So then, so then, let me just go back. What questions, I'm gonna throw this back to Eileen. What, what questions do you think are not answered? I, I pretty much, I pretty much got everything I need.
I don't have any questions. I mean, to me, it's a zoning change and all the details are gonna go to Plan Commission. My concern is that it doesn't sound like everybody is on the same page. And I don't wanna see this not pass and wind up in a courtroom.
So I, I guess, I guess where we should leave this then is if there's more questions that need to be answered, now is the time to push your button and get the questions out there, and, uh, then we can move forward. I believe with a vote, if it doesn't make a difference because of a petition, right?
Yeah, I, I guess I do wanna, before you go on, I do wanna remind you of the two things. The, the one is that I'd rather the attorney you respond to is what you can't consider is discrimination, which lists what? I can't remember.
Oh, race, religion, lawful source of income, which is the one we're talking about here. Um, what do we say? Ace, race, race, religion, sex, national origin. There's about eight or ten of them. That's about five of them.
That can't be taken in consideration. That is the thing that got New Berlin into the lawsuit that they did not win. Um, the other, um, matter is the, um, I'm hearing about traffic and density. None of those were discussed when the other one was approved. That was double the density, and which I think is what Alderman Kubaki's mentioned. I just wanna point that out. Those are the dicey areas that you're entering into, um, basing your decisions on those. Uh, so I'm ju, I just have to, it's my job to tell you that, and he would want me to, so I did.
The only reason I'm throwing out that thing I did about everybody giving their reason, is I'm trying to protect us. In the event we do get sued, at least I can go there and say, "Well, here's the decisions that we made. Here were the, here's the rationale. It falls right in line with our code." That's the only reason why I brought that up.
Alderman Kubaki?
I come out of a highly regulated area in the housing market, and it just scares me to hear some of the comments that I've heard and then take a subsequent vote. Um, if it's not a positive outcome, uh, I'm very concerned. Very concerned.
Alderman Wolf?
Again, you know, I, I, I'm gonna point out that the reason I brought up the roads is just to make an intelligent decision on this and, and, and to make it known that my concerns with the city need to look at that area. Um, so that the people living there are comfortable with whatever decisions made here. So that's, that's, I just wanna point that out, that I'm trying to look at it from both sides and be fair about it, so we, we can keep going back to, we should stay on issue, but to me, the issue is, is the whole area. And maybe I missed that last time, not realizing it, but you, as, as you move forward with projects and you do different things and look at them differently, um, cause you drive the street versus not driving, whatever, I, I bring the points up no matter what, you know, it, this is a whole new project. I, I drove it this time. I didn't drive it last time, and, uh, so I just wanted to bring it up. So it has nothing to do with the project itself.
And it's good information for Plan Commission and the BSO.
And that's my point, is I wanna just be record that there's concerns with, with this project, so, uh, it, not the project itself, but the surrounding area of the project, so.
Thank you. Anything else? I don't see anyone else in the queue. So please cast your vote.
No. Do we have a motion to approve?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
It is approved, um, fi, uh, five to one. Thank you. And then we have, um, go to my pages. Review of committee reports.
Finance Committee, November thirteenth. Plan Commission, November eighth.
And first reading of ordinances and possible second reading if rules are waived. We have ordinance fourteen twenty-six and ordinance to amend chapter thirty, section thirty-dash-one of the municipal code of the City of Muskogee for the polling places.
Move to approve.
No, it's first reading.
It's first reading.
Oh, oops, sorry.
I'm sorry, first reading. An ordinance fourteen twenty-seven and ordinance to amend the zoning map of twenty-twenty. Comprehensive plan of the City of Muskogee, uh, B four to M one, Minin, uh, D and J, and Sons LLC. License approval.
Don't see that on here.
Don't you do this?
No.
I don't see it on the, on the, the license approval? Yeah.
You don't see it on yours?
Yeah, it's not on here. Okay, well, we'll just have to do it by hand. Okay. Um, license for the approval of a Class B retailers license for the sale of fermented malt beverages and intoxicating liquor for outside and with bacon LLC. On Janesville Road, agent is Janine Paoli, outside area licensed until close.
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion?
Oops.
We, we-
We're not on here, so.
So, ju, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved unanimously. Voucher approval. That should be in there, right? We hope. Is it, do you see it? Is it in there?
Yeah, it's here.
All right, I'm looking at him. You can go ahead.
I'm on request, it says RTS on mine, so.
Yeah, me too.
I don't know.
You're stuck on that? Is it stuck?
Yep.
We all are. Been through the last one way first.
I guess we'll have to do it verbally.
That's what I was saying.
Is that okay?
Should we just verbally?
Chill, we do the rest verbally?
It's all we can do.
It's fine.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Motion to approve utility vouchers in the amount of fifty-five thousand, fifty-seven dollars and eleven cents.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved.
There are no tax vouchers. Motion to approve general fund vouchers in the amount of one million, three hundred seventy-one thousand, five hundred sixty-seven dollars and eleven cents.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved.
Now we're, now we're up.
Now we're up.
Should we just keep going the way we're going?
Yep.
Yeah, we're just gonna finish it.
And then, motion to approve, uh, wire transfers for payroll transmittals for the amount of three million, I'm sorry, uh, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty-one cents.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Uh, city official reports, nothing. Uh, communications, miscellaneous business, we have the Aldermanic liaison updates, if there are any?
No.
Nope.
Nothing.
I could-
Nothing, okay.
Can tell you that, uh, senior taxi continues to operate at a pretty full clip. We had all four vehicles out today, fleet vehicles out. Uh, each of them had about a hun, a hundred miles on them today with about seven riders on each car at different times. Um, our fifth car is being used very sparingly, only in the case with a car would be in the shop overnight or, or wouldn't start in the morning. That would be the only case that the fifth, that the fifth car is out, so we're, we're operating very good, running along well.
Thank you.
Little Muskogee Lake had no meeting this month, but, uh, I see there's ice on the lake and I even saw people out on it already.
Wow. My goodness.
It's good for those who like winter. I'm not one of those. Okay, um, closed session?
Following conclusion of consideration of the above portion of its regularly scheduled agenda, the common council will meet to vote on a motion to convene in closed session for discussion action relative to Sons of Union veterans of the Civil War Department of Wisconsin, Colonel Hans C. Hagg Camp number fifteen in care of Jeffrey M. Groff et al. versus City of Muskogee, Waukesha County, case number seventeen dash CV dash zero 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 six zero six. And to take such further action as may be necessary and appropriate with respect to such matters. A closed session for the above purpose is authorized pursuant to the provisions of nineteen point eight-five one G of the Wisconsin statutes, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who was rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Upon conclusion of the closed session, the common council will convene an open session to consider its public agenda, including motions to recommend approval or rejection of the above listed deliberations or any of the public agenda items that have not been acted upon.
Motion to go in closed session, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I have to do a real call.
Oh, I'm sorry, real call.
Okay.
Um, Alderman Madden?
Yes.
Alderman Kubaki?
Yes.
Alderman Engelhardt?
Yes.
Alderman Kapusta? Alderman Borgman?
Yes.
Alderman Wolf?
Yes.
There are six in favor.
Okay, we'll be going into closed session. Alderman Wolf, you could close that door and then we'll go back there. We won't come back out here. Oh yeah, we will have to come back. No, we can open that door and do, oh no, we have to come back out here.
We have to open the door.
They're gonna lock the door on us.